Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 15th, 2022 City Council meeting. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. And I would ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record by standing and stating their name and address.
I'm just recording the penny.
Oh, okay, that's not necessary. It's fine. Thank you, though. That we look forward to. Counselor Fleming, would you please lead us into the flag?
My pleasure, leading through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fleming.
President.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Squalia.
Present remotely.
Present remotely. Counselor Van Hanzenga.
Here.
President Zarella.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
Present.
Counselor Kuchar.
Here.
Counselor Criggan.
Here.
Counselor Cruz.
Here.
Counselor Deena Tally.
Thank you very much. Public forum. The public had been advised to contact the city clerk's office regarding any comments of no more than two minutes, and none were brought to our attention. If there is anyone in the audience wishing to speak to any item on the agenda, you may approach the podium, identify yourself by name and address, identify the agenda item on which you would like to speak, and you may address the council for not more than two minutes. Seeing none, we have the report of the Appointments Committee. Counselor Kuchar.
Thank you, President Zarella. The Appointments Committee met a few moments ago, and we took up reappointments to the Pittsburgh Historical Commission, term to expire February 1st of 2025, of Ms. Ellen DiGeronimo and Donald Ostrowski, all of which were approved unanimously. We also took up new appointments, one to the Pittsburgh Disability Commission, Ms. Marshall Hansen? Okay, thank you very much. Term to expire March 1st of 2025. And also, two full-time police officers, Esteban Bonilla Perez and Shannon Burke, all of which were approved unanimously.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second to approve. If there is no objection, they are approved. Congratulations. And Chief, I apologize, I forgot to invite you up if you wanted to say a few words.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Remember if you pulled me over, not to give you credit.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's Mark.
Congratulations.
Oh, Disability Commission.
I know, there.
Yeah.
I thought she was a police officer.
And Chief Martino, I apologize, I forgot to ask before we took that up, if you would like to say a few words, you certainly may.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you very much for your unanimous support tonight for my two police officers. As I told the Appointments Committee, this is an exciting time. These two officers are coming to the Pittsburgh Police Department with a full academy under their belt, which is really going to expedite them getting out into the streets, working solo. So, in the next couple of weeks, they're going to start their field training for the next 12 weeks, going to be working side by side with experienced police officers, learning the job as police officers. But all the difficulties we're having right now recruiting and getting people into the police department, this is really a big step, having these two officers fully trained and get them out there as quickly as possible. So, I'd like to thank the council for their commitment to the police department, and I look forward to having them on the street. And I'd like to just publicly congratulate all the firefighters here this evening, well-deserved promotions, gentlemen, and best of luck in your new positions. Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Congratulations again. We're happy to have you here. And these new police officers will be sworn in on April 4th. Next, we have the report of the Committee on Records. Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reports appear to be in order. Thank you.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report of the Committee on Records. If there is no objection, the report is accepted. We have a communication from His Honor, the Mayor, a promotion letter for Lieutenant Andrew Doughty to permanent fire captain, Private Kyle Forrest to permanent fire lieutenant, Private Paul Duquette to permanent fire lieutenant, Lieutenant Ryan Kringan to permanent captain, and the rank is not listed, but I'm assuming Private Michael Smith to permanent lieutenant.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members, and I thank you all for your time and the use of this forum to acknowledge the achievement of these five firefighters. At this time, I'd like to call the five candidates to the podium so that I can introduce them to you.
With pleasure.
This is Andrew Doughty, six-year veteran, Group One, Engine Two, from Oak Hill. Ryan Kringan, 11-year veteran, Group One, Engine Four Headquarters. This is Paul Duquette, five-year veteran, Group Two, Engine Four Headquarters. Kyle Forrest, 11-year veteran, Group One, Engine Two, Oak Hill. And then Michael Smith, who is an eight-year veteran, Group One, Engine Four Headquarters. So, these are the five candidates. These five candidates have successfully passed the Mass Civil Service Promotional Exam and are the top five candidates in each of their ranks. Let me say that these candidates are replacing retired officers, so these are not new positions, and there will be no extra incurred costs to the Fire Department budget. As many of you know from past promotions, a great deal of work and sacrifice goes into studying for these promotions. There's eight to nine full textbooks that must be read cover to cover. That information needs to be read, understood, and memorized. Most of these candidates have studied well over a year for this promotion. They've paid nearly $1,000 each out of their own pocket. All this with the understanding that even if they pass the exam, there's no assurance that they're going to get promoted. I've worked with each of these candidates for many years and know firsthand the hard work, professionalism, and dedication that they bring to their profession on a daily basis. Nothing would make me prouder than to see these five candidates promoted tonight, not only to acknowledge the hard work, but ultimately to challenge each and every one of them with the high responsibility and more important duties. There's no doubt, in my opinion, that these challenges will be accepted proudly and will be accomplished with the utmost professionalism and commitment to the City of Pittsburgh and President's so that we can all provide the best five service possible. Again, I'm very proud to have these five candidates before you and will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from Counselors? Counselor Green.
I would just like to say that it must be these gentlemen getting older, not us, who are sitting on council, because I remember when at least two of them, Kyle and Ryan, came before us at Memorial Middle School when they were just starting. So, I can't believe that that's been seven to 10 years ago, but here we are. I'm so proud of all of you and the dedication that you've put in. So, again, Chief, thank you for bringing forth well-qualified candidates who are able to take care of our community and are able to do so in a safe, secure way. So, thank you, and again, I appreciate your continuing dedication, some multi-generations, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor.
And I will note that these are, in fact, promotions and don't require referral to the Appointments Committee. So, congratulations to all five gentlemen. We greatly appreciate your service and look forward to seeing what you will do in the future. And with that, if the Clerk is prepared.
Thank you, Mr. President.
This will be the swearing-in. I would ask that Counselors near the center stand to the side so that families can take pictures without eating horribly faces in there.
Do you want to do the captains first? Yep. Andrew and Ryan.
We have cameras on this side. You probably want to move over me. Okay, I'm going to ask you both to raise your right hand and repeat after me to take note. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Into the best of my knowledge and ability.
Into the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a permanent fire captain.
As a permanent fire captain.
For the City of Pittsburgh.
For the City of Pittsburgh.
So help me God.
So help me God.
They're all just out of their cameras. See, they'll taste what's on today. Again, if I could have you raise your right hand and repeat after me to take note. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Into the best of my knowledge and ability.
Into the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a permanent fire lieutenant.
As a permanent fire lieutenant.
For the City of Pittsburgh.
For the City of Pittsburgh.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Delicious students.
The families may approach wherever they would like to take pictures. We are in no particular hurry, so take your time, you only get to do this once.
Okay, watch out, the cameras are behind you. Will you take one with me in it?
I can't say what I usually say. No, I'm good, I'm good. Touch no water. You're not getting the photos. You're not getting the photos.
It's a million-dollar shot right there.
I'm going to give them a couple minutes. How you doing? That's always good. Always good. My back.
Your back.
Good, how are you?
He stole my pen back.
You perfectly are.
When I just got promoted, I think that's Paul. Yeah, his girlfriend.
All right. Congratulations again, and thank you for allowing us to be part of this.
I used to play with my daughters, you know.
Oh, my gosh.
Have a nice night.
See him squally, that's why he's going to get hurt. That's why he's in the hospital. That's why she's.
We've been talking about that for decades.
Give us more daylight.
I don't know, he lost him, he says he's pretty bad. Pretty deep. Is the table saw?
Had it for years.
Really? Yeah. Yeah, he almost had that here today.
Listen, my brother-in-law lost a finger.
Oh, yeah?
Run the table. There's two people left. They work for the city.
I get awful nervous when I run that. I get awful nervous when I run it.
Well, it's clear that we are not the main event tonight.
In your own mind, maybe.
Resuming our agenda, we have an annual report from the Pittsburgh Redevelopment Authority for fiscal year 2021 and audited financials for fiscal year 2020. If there is no objection, that package, we will waive the reading and place it on file with the city clerk. Seeing no objection, it will be filed. Next, we have a report from the Finance Committee. Counselor Deena Tally is not present this evening, so I will deliver the report. The Finance Committee met on March 8th and took up three matters. 30 and 31, 22, two separate grants for a combined total of $130,000 for the purpose of said grants, which are to provide outreach services to the homeless population of the city. Those were both unanimously adopted.
I make a motion, will you accept 30 and 31?
Second.
Yes, 32.
All right, we have a motion and second to accept 30 and 31, 22. If there is no objection, they are approved. We also had the Community Development Block Grant, Year 48.
I make a motion, will you accept the CBG block grants? That's approved.
Second. Thank you, I have a motion and second. Just to remind Counselors, please wait for the reading to conclude unless you have a motion to waive. That said, I do have a motion and second. If there is no objection, it is approved. This was approved unanimously by the Finance Committee as well, just for the record. Next, we have Orders Finance. 035, 22, ordered that the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Safe Grant in the amount of $3,255 for the purpose of said grant, which is to educate seniors in the community regarding fire and life safety topics. 36, 22, ordered that the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Safe Grant in the amount of $6,275, I'm sorry, the approximate amount, $6,275 for the purpose of said grant, which is to continue to teach fire safety to students. 37, 22, that there be and hereby is transferred from within the sum of $15,552, same to be transferred from Veterans Personal Services Clerical and credited to Veterans Expenses Temporary Personal Services. Those three orders stand referred to Finance. 038, 22, up to and including 053, 22, are all simply the individual line items of the ARPA budget that was already approved, so these will not be sent to Finance, and I would ask you.
I make a motion, will you accept those?
Thank you, Counselor.
Make a motion for suspension of the rules.
We don't actually need a suspension of the rules, but thank you. So, I do have a motion to accept 038, 22 through 053, 22. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection. Madam Clerk, we don't need a roll call for this, right? Didn't think so. All right, if there is no objection, it is approved. Next, we have Orders Other, 054, 22, whereas a third amendment is necessary in order to allow the town of Westminster to transfer discharge from the Route 31 sewer line to the Route 2A sewer line, and the parties entered into the agreement and wish to continue into good-faith negotiations relative to the terms of a new intermunicipal agreement after receipt of certain studies that remain outstanding and input from the Department of Environmental Protection and the Environmental Protection Agency so as best to accommodate increased flow from Westminster. Solicitor, are we doing a suspension on this or just referring?
You know, wastewater commission still has to review that, so.
Ah, okay, then this will stand referred to Legislative Affairs.
Or alternatively, you could hold it on the table and then we could get a report from the wastewater commission. It would be in your discretion, Mr. President.
Yes, it will go to Legislative Affairs, which will presumably hold it if wastewater has not reported by then. Then we have an ordinance in first reading, 55, 22, amending Section 169, 25 of the City Code, no parking Ellis Street, Kingsbury Street, and Drury Street as outlined in the enclosed ordinance, reference petition 166, 21. Counselor Green.
I would just like to say that this has been brought forward a couple of times into the public safety, and all this is doing is just changing and setting forth the ordinance that was originally adopted for the parking 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. and then 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday.
Thank you. Counselor Boishman.
I get one question, I'm not against it, but I would like to know, my question to you is this, what if you get a tenant that's a neighbor from hell, and he says, okay, I'm having a party, it's in the summertime, and 10 o'clock in the morning or 2 o'clock in the afternoon, my party starts and I start parking, and then there's no school, bear in mind, there's no school, and there's no parking signs from 2:00 to 4:00, and I put them on the street. What happens then?
So, I don't have the text of the ordinance in front of me at the moment?
I would suggest that the good discretion of the Pittsburgh Police Department would probably step in, and absent serious complaints from neighbors, I think this primarily, I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead, continue.
Primarily, I think what was happening in the area, and I have to say, I live on Ellis Street, so I was looking at this saying, I probably have to write the mayor a note to tell him that I'll be drafting this ordinance again, but at one point in time, the school department was directing folks to use Ellis Street and Drury Lane as drop-off, and that was creating a lot of congestion on the crosswalk and on the street. And so, there was a number of complaints, I think, and this is, and Counselor Green could certainly speak more to it than I, this was somewhat in response to an evolving new plan to figure out how to control parking on the street.
Right, this was all just due to neighbors complaining whose driveways were being blocked, the sidewalk was being blocked, and it was dangerous for the kids to be dropped off, even on the sidewalk side, only on the northbound side of the street, and then have to leave the sidewalk, walk out in the street, and around all the cars. So, this was a way, maybe first phase, to alleviate the congestion of people parking on both sides of the street, all the way down the street. And in reading the ordinance, it was from Monday through Friday, but I didn't think about summertime, where there wouldn't be school. I'm just concerned, especially if it doesn't stay on both sides of the street, which I definitely want it to, there would be no room for any of our fire apparatus to get down Ellis Street if cars were parked on both sides of the street. It would be impossible. So, I don't know. I say we let the DPW put up the signs, see how it works through this school year, and if it needs to be addressed during the summer, I guess, maybe talk it up with the police on when, if that would ever become a problem.
Mr. President.
You still have.
Don't get me wrong, I voted for, I'm not against, I'm only asking that question because I remember we passed it on Pearl Street, and not even a month after we passed it and the signs went up, there was a party, and they were parking on both sides of Pearl Street on Aurora Row, which the rule says say no. So, I was just wondering, you get that neighbor from hell, and all of a sudden, he doesn't like Amy Green or Boishman, I'm calling up the police because the sign says there's no parking 2:00 to 4:00.
Right, right, so, again, that would be, if the ordinance itself does not include an exclusion for the summer, then it would still be in force. We have the option to amend that, but I am getting the sense that no one seems to think that's warranted at this time, but if it becomes a problem, we could certainly amend to change it in the law or something. Next, is that all set, Counselor?
I'm all set, I'm not going to vote for, I'm voting for it anyway.
Yep, next I have Counselor Fleming.
Okay, yeah, just have a couple, you answered part of my question, what the reasoning was behind this. So, I had the same problem on Lincoln Street, Ward 5, with the college, and nothing was done about it for the same exact reason, because you had the college students all parking several streets down because there was not enough parking up at the school. So, the people ended up putting up their own no-parking signs. So, I want to know how this alleviates the issue with dropping the kids off at school. So, if they had to go onto those streets to drop the kids off, to get them to school, how does it remedy that? how does it remedy that?
I can, I can answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Am I naked here? Yeah, go ahead. If, if the councillor is willing to yield the floor.
They were circumventing the, the drop-off at the school, that's why they were going on those streets, and that was, that was creating a dangerous situation, and that's what Sergeant Boudreau and Amy and I were trying to address with this, with this ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, it was, they were supposed to be dropping off at the school, and they were, they were using these streets to, to circumvent that.
Right, yeah, because I, it is, it is a problem, you know, but most of the schools will be dropping off the kids. So when you're saying no parking, that's on both sides, both sides of the street?
Yeah.
So what if we just allow parking on one side of the street? The, the fire trucks should be able to go down, I mean, you're just totally eliminating the parking on that street altogether, that's a pretty big street, and it's a pretty, it's a street that's.
It doesn't, it's not the whole street, it's only to Burnap Street, right, Amy? Burnap Street to, to south?
Go ahead.
Thank you. It does run Ellis Street down to Drury Lane on the left, and then down to Burnap on the right, and that strictly is because the residents who live there, and yeah, quite frankly, the DPW as well, is tired of replacing people's front yards, because people who are dropping off or picking up, this is a generalized statement, for years have had no respect for the residents who are living there, and that, that it is their property. So to alleviate that, councillor Schultz and I decided, you know, that the best way to do that would be just to eliminate it altogether, because it really were the, the drop-off line cutters who were the biggest offenders of this problem. You know, and then there, there was a time when we actually had paraprofessionals and teachers parking on Ellis Street, because they couldn't find room over in the, in the South Street Lot.
Okay, so if that is the case, where are these people gonna park, if they can't find anything in the parking?
They'll have to park further down Ellis Street, is what they'll, not so close to the, to the end of the street.
Counselors, just to avoid too much back and forth, please remember to direct all commentary through the chair. You don't have to actually say through the chair, that, we don't need to stand on that formality, but just wait to be recognized, so that we don't just get into a three or four or five-way dialogue. But, yes.
I just, I just feel we have a lot of elimination of parking in the city, and it just, this is just another street with another congested school, where people are gonna be in chaos trying to find someplace to park, that's all.
So briefly, before I move on to councillor Schultz, unless you've said everything you were going to say.
I, I have some more to say, I guess.
Okay, so briefly, I'd just like to note that this is a residential street, and so if the residents of the street would prefer not to have on-street parking, I'm more inclined to prioritize their preference over that of people who don't live on the street and wish to park there.
I just want to respond to that, can I respond?
Go ahead, briefly.
I understand it's, the neighbors live on that street, but that is also a public road that these people are also paying taxes for, and you're eliminating parking that may be convenient for them, and that's, that's the problem, is we, we're, we have a lot of people coming asking for no parking, and we're giving it to them, and that's one of the reasons people say there's no parking in Fitchburg. So that's just one of my complaints.
I think that would have more force if it were a commercial area, but.
But that's a pretty well-traveled road, Ellis Street.
That said, councillor Schultz.
Yeah, I, I want to say too, that it is only four hours a day, as councillor Green said earlier, and it is something, it's not something that just popped up overnight, it has been an ongoing issue for, for quite a few years, councillor Fleming, so I think the residents are really on board with, with this, and, and talking to Sergeant Boudreau, as far as enforcing it during the summertime, there was not going to be an enforcement during the summertime, this was just for the, for the school year. Thank you.
And I can say, I, I do recall getting several calls from residents over the last several years, saying, you know, I can't get by in the morning, because there are people parked outside my house, and so on. Councillor Van Hazenga.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would like to echo, councillor Schultz mentioned that this is something that's been discussed in committees for quite some time, I think it's been a couple of years this, this has been working its way through, and no residents have spoken in opposition to this proposal, they've in fact encouraged it. This area is an area of relatively low density, the houses have driveways and off-street parking, so it's not a situation where residents are typically parking on the street. It's a limited time of day, and it is a safety issue. To the other concerns that were raised in regards to enforcement during the summer, there's a similar situation in my ward along the, the Longstair Middle School on Pleasant Street, where there's time-restricted parking during the day, and the, in my conversations with the, the traffic officer, they are quite aware of the intent of the ordinance, and while it is on the books, they are as reasonable as they possibly can in enforcement, that it's really just during schooltimes that they pay attention to this, and are very concerned about it, because that's what it matters, and that's the, the clear intent of the, the restrictions. Thank you.
Oh, councillor Kregan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can, my experience as a longtime school committee member is that Ellis Street is amazingly occluded during the school day, so again, as a new councillor, I'm, I'm new to the traffic and, and ordinance situations, but I certainly have seen residents be unhappy about cars parking there, because again, it is also the, the closest, the, the closest road to South Street, which has over 600 kids, so that, the parking issues are something that the schools have been dealing with, and we've done a lot of work on the South Street parking lot itself, but I know we don't have a lot of kind of parking restrictions within Fitchburg, and it seems that residents driving, driving an ordinance such as this is something we need to be really respectful of. I yield the floor.
Solicitor Pushteri?
Just to correct, I want to make sure it's clear, that there will still be parking in front of my house, so if there's residents that need to park, they can still come down to my house.
God bless you.
Yes.
You heard it here, anyone who needs to park in that area, go to Solicitor Pushteri's house.
Don't say that.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the resolution. I'm sorry, the ordinance, sorry.
Second. I have a motion and second to pass the ordinance through first reading. If there is no objection, then this is approved under unanimous consent. All right, petitions. Fifty-seven, twenty-two. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, madam clerk. We have a resolution first, fifty-six, twenty-two. Providing for the amendment to the Fitchburg Downtown Urban Revitalization and Development Plan as outlined in the enclosed, enclosed resolution, and I have received a request for suspension of rules on this matter.
Motion for suspension of the rules?
Second.
Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Fleming.
Yes.
Councillor Green.
Yes.
Councillor Schultz.
Yes.
Councillor Squalia.
Aye.
Councillor Van Hazenga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Councillor Boishman.
Okay, yes.
Councillor Kuchar.
Yes.
Councillor Kregan.
Yes.
Councillor Cruz.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
All right, the matter is before the council, and I see that councillor Squalia has her hand up.
Yes, thank you. Whoever put this resolution forward, if they could just explain it, it, it just appears that it, it includes the downtown Fitchburg area, that's all I'm understanding.
And would I be incorrect, Mr. Solicitor, in saying that this is a resolution taking up what was presented to the council in the presentation a week or two ago?
Yes, this relates to the prior petition that was approved by council, I think, two weeks ago. What we did is, we looked at the submittal process with the, with the state, it was a concern that the mayor doesn't sign the petitions, and consequently, we wanted to have a document that bared the mayor's signature. We have, we're under the impression that this was clear, adopting the Amendment Nine that this council approved, and we, I, I thought I made that, I tried to make that clear for your consideration by attaching the plan.
Excellent, thank you. Does that answer your question, councillor?
Yes, I understand, thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. Councillor Boishman.
And the petition was zero zero seven dash twenty-two.
Thank you, councillor.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the resolution. If there is no objection, seeing none, it is passed under unanimous consent. Petitions. Zero fifty-seven, twenty-two. Tom Skrowski, Executive Director of Community Development and Planning, to request the city council to declare the following parcel as surplus property. Four ninety-one Main Street Assessor's Map, forty-three, eight, zero, that's sent to city property. Fifty-eight, twenty-two. Sergeant Daniel Boudreau, Fitchburg Police Traffic Unit, petition for no parking at all times on Industrial and Stevens Roads, both sides, that's public safety. Sergeant Boudreau, to petition for a no parking tow zone on both sides of Roper Road, from Industrial Road to the Westminster Line, that's public safety. Sergeant Boudreau, to petition for no parking during game-on functions, tow zone for the entire length on both sides of Victoria Lane, that will be sent to public safety. Councillors Marcus De Natale and Paul Boishman, on behalf of Elmer Eubanks, to repair a damaged berm in front of four twenty-seven Oak Hill Road that is now causing water runoff onto the property, that will be sent to Public Works. And sixty-two, twenty-two. Councillor Paul Boishman, to install a berm from the corner of Stanley Street to eighty Pershing Street on both sides of the road to mitigate water runoff, that will be sent to Public Works. And then I have two announcements this evening. I have Ward One's city councillor Bernie Schultz is hosting a Ward One Community Meeting on Monday, April 11th, 2022, at 6:30 PM here in the Legislative Building, 700 Main Street. Planning and Community Development Director Tom Skrowski and Assessor Chris Paquette will make presentations and answer questions. And then, from councillor Kregan, the Highland Baptist Church is having a vaccine clinic this Thursday, March 17th, six, three to six PM. Vaccines available will be Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. Nineteen Cedar Street is the location. Registration is encouraged, but walk-ins welcome. Call nine seven eight six zero two two three five six for registration, and there are $25 gift certificates from Hannahford available at the door, first come, first served. I would encourage anyone who has not received their vaccinations to check out this clinic. If not for the vaccine, at least go for the gift card. And that concludes our business this evening. Motion adjourned.
Second.
I have eight motions to adjourn and several seconds. Seeing that there is no objection, we are adjourned.